So to explain what I'm doing, Excel has a randomized function where it will spit out random numbers and we're going to organize this from least to greatest to figure out which order people will be speaking in. So for introductions, we will start with Chris, move on to Alicia, then David, Katie, Aisha, and then Stephen. We will start that now with Chris, who will be followed by Alicia. So Chris, welcome to our South Uptown Neighborhood Association meeting. You have five minutes to present.
Thank you very much. Am I coming through?
Yes.
Okay. All right. First of all, I want to thank South Uptown Neighborhood Association for putting this on and allowing this platform for all the candidates. I also want to thank all those in attendance. Functional democracy requires participation and your participation is very much welcome here. I also want to thank my fellow candidates for stepping up to serve our community by running for city council. Although we may differ on some of our policies, we all want what's best for the city and for many Apolitans. So thank you all for stepping up to run. My name is Chris Parsons. My pronouns are he/him. I'm running for city council in Ward 10 and I'm running because I want to carry the voice and values of Ward 10 to City Hall and be an effective advocate for you. I plan to bring a collaborative approach to governing at City Hall while being accessible and accountable. I live in South Uptown. I moved here because I love running around the lakes. I love having easy access to a wide variety of small businesses and I love the overall vibrant community. I've lived in Minneapolis for most of my life. My parents were renters for my entire upbringing and I've been a renter or homeowner, raised kids in the city. I believe I have a combination of lived experiences and professional work that allows me to be an effective advocate for Ward 10. My parents moved to Minneapolis with my brother and I when I was two years old and they came up here to find better job opportunities. My father is black, my mother is white. Both grew up during the civil rights struggles of the 50s and 60s. They were married just three years after the US Supreme Court decided in Loving versus Virginia that states could not outlaw interracial marriage. My father worked for 30 years as a union laborer. My mother worked several different jobs before becoming a union cleaner with SCIU Local 26 and then working her way up into management until she recently retired. The bedrock of my values and my beliefs come from the struggles and triumphs of my hard working parents. I was raised in the Marcy Holmes neighborhood. I attended Minneapolis Public Schools, played organized sports at Logan Park in northeast Minneapolis. I attended UW River Falls. I have a bachelor's degree in sociology and a minor in criminal justice. Two years after graduation, I was hired by the St. Paul Fire Department where I have served for 20 years. I hold the rank of fire captain and emergency medical technician. In that job, I respond to hundreds of calls every year. I serve largely a lower income community. It affords me a view into, in a window into people's worlds that informs my beliefs as well and leads me to want to make change in their lives. And for the last 15 years, I've been a worker and fire service advocate. I served my local union for eight years as a principal officer, providing representation to my coworkers and negotiating for better wages, benefits, and working conditions and engaging local politicians and neighbors in public safety issues. For the last seven years, I've been president of the Minnesota Professional Firefighters where I have worked to influence public safety issues on a statewide level. In my time lobbying at the Capitol, I've had much success, most notably in 2015 and 2019 where I worked to pass legislation to ban toxic flame retardants in upholstered furniture and children's products for which I received recognition from colleagues all over the country, as well as twice becoming the clean water action hero of the year. Most recently, I worked on a bill to pass COVID-19 worker pay protection for first responders and healthcare workers. That effort protected tens of thousands of frontline workers from firefighters to nurses to personal care attendants in the event that they were to contract COVID-19. And many people have benefited from that work. All this success was accomplished by building coalitions, building teamwork among a wide range of stakeholders and making sound reasonable arguments to win the day. I believe that this approach can translate to the city council where we can tackle the challenges that we have around policing, police accountability, making our streets safer, and tackling issues of affordable housing and sustainability and also getting us, getting our workers in the city up to a living wage. I ask that Ward 10 residents, make me your first choice this coming November and I thank you very much again for allowing me to be here today.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Alicia, after which we will hear from David. So Alicia, the floor is yours.
Hello, everyone. Thank you also for inviting me. I go by the pronouns she/her and thank you to the South Uptown for having us all on. So this weekend, I learned that one of my mentors recently died after living a very long and beautiful life. Professor Abdullah Z. Said was an iconic figure at my alma mater, American University, where he trained generations of people in diplomacy and peace and conflict resolution. I had the fortune of being able to study with him, but also work with him in the Islamic Center for Peace. He was one of the first in his field to acknowledge that peace is not simply the absence of violence, it is the presence of justice, it is the presence of equality, and it is the presence of cooperation. Growing up in Oklahoma, raised in part by my Japanese grandmother, I saw how she and my mother had such a difficult time living in a place without community and living in a place that had a difficult time accepting difference. So when I went to college, I knew that what I wanted to learn was how we transition from a world organized around exploitation to a world organized around care. This is why I went to South Africa to study the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. It's why I went to law school to study environmental and federal Indian law and then returned to school to teach students how to think critically about racism, sexism, and economic exploitation. It's why when I was there, I was part of a leadership group who tried to get recognition for a union of graduate students. It's why I started a small business in a struggling neighborhood and also started a small business association. It's why I was a leader for a support group for Planned Parenthood in a place where, you know, reproductive rights are really hanging on by a thread. And it's why I have been for the last few years really digging into my community to strengthen democracy at the grassroots level. I've lived in four of the five neighborhoods for Ward 10 and for most of that time as a renter and then most recently as a homeowner. As the, just in the past year, as the Lowry Hill East Neighborhood Association President, some of the things I did to strengthen democracy was to expand the scope of what we do to include mutual aid work. And this was around the time that the global pandemic hit. Because we brought it into the association itself, we were able to leverage a donation for a food share program, turn that into a grant, raise even more money, and have our food share program funded through 2021. I organized public safety visioning sessions at the park so that neighbors could come together to think creatively about the future of policing. I moderated a boots-on-the-ground forum with Northside community leaders so that people in our part of the city could have a more expanded understanding of public safety from really a city-wide context. I, after that, I collaborated to create a mentorship grant program and our first recipient is going to be Brothers Empowered. So I really encourage everybody to go to the Lena website and Lena Facebook page and please donate to this worthy organization. I led protests about affordable housing when a developer was able to purchase a building that they damaged and then tear it down. I pushed for the creation of a proactive neighborhood development vision and a draft development scorecard, bringing together neighbors with really diverse and sometimes divergent opinions to build, you know, a coalition around the things that we had in common. And finally, I organized a restorative justice training for the Neighborhood Association Board. The focus of this campaign is on empowering community. And a lot of people are going to talk about community and power, but what does that really mean? This means power, giving power to community institutions, creating engagement processes that are much more than surveys or listening sessions where people have already made decisions and we just get to ask questions. It means funding community organizations and doing the work of a council member to answer phone calls, respond to emails, connect residents to information, resources, and to each other. As I look at all the multiple crises that are facing Minneapolis, I see that we must stabilize our small business segment of our community. And then we need to implement policies around restorative justice, housing justice, and environmental justice. I have a number of specific practical proposals regarding each of these that I look forward to sharing with you and collaborating on over the course of the next year and beyond. I know that we are capable of transforming this moment of crisis into opportunity as long as we work together in the spirit of cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alicia. Next, we will hear from David, after which we will hear from Katie. David, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much. I'm a he/him and, but what I'm laughing about as I think about all this is I am by far the oldest one here in terms of candidates and I, no matter what you may hear, I was not born in a log cabin. I was however, born in Duluth and there was lots of wilderness in the area. My family had lived at the head of the lakes since the end of the 1850s and I grew up in a family where they got very involved in the life of the community and wanted to make a difference, whether it would be working with YMCA. My grandfather was an elected public official. So there was sort of that heritage and that tradition. Much of my life, I served as an ordained United Methodist minister. Give you a little more background, when I was in high school, I was an exchange student to India, which absolutely changed my life because I had an opportunity as sort of a middle-class Minnesota boy to be thrust into the inner city of Bombay and all that that had. And it really forced me to think about life in a much different way. I came back, I studied history and philosophy, did a junior year abroad, University of London. And then I worked for the YMCA in Athens, Greece. And I'm a huge believer in a lot of the great nonprofits we have in our community. They are part of the solution, just as much as government is and just as much as other partners are. So I worked for the YMCA in Athens, Greece, and it was there that I felt the call to go into ministry. So I went to Yale Divinity School in New Haven, Connecticut. And it was a three-year program there, but during that three-year program, I took a year of internship. I lived in northeast Minneapolis. So the first time I lived in Minneapolis was in the 70s. It's a long time ago. And I know northeast pretty well. And then I came back to the Twin Cities, moved back to Minneapolis in 97. So I've been a member of the Wedge Co-op since 1997. It's always been one of my favorite places. I only shop there two or three times a week. I love the place. Anyway, so I moved on here to, for a job, ended up going through a divorce, which was a difficult time. And after some time of healing, I thought, you know, I was a Duluth City Council member. I ran for mayor of the city of Duluth. I was involved as a city council person. So I went to the mayor's office and I said, RT, you know, let me do something. I want to help out. I've got time now and I've got some skills and background. He just sort of sat back and he said, have you ever heard of the Board of Estimate and Taxation? Most people haven't, but, and I had heard of it, but that's all I knew. So I ended up running for it and was elected and been elected citywide three times. I come to this campaign because this last year has been traumatic for our city, deeply traumatic. And at a time when many people step aside in their later 60s, I've decided to step forward because I have lots of experience and background working in a whole variety of places and ways. As a city councillor, as somebody that helped engineer some significant changes in Duluth where we started the Human Rights Commission, like many of you, I worked hard to make marriage equality a reality here, working closely with my Senator Scott Dibble and so many other partners in all of this. Anyway, I decided to jump in because I think there are, we're at a really critical time. I mean really critical. We have a year or two to turn things around and if we don't do that, there could be a downward spiral that I think is really a little bit scary. We have the need to change our police culture and we need to deal with public safety issues. We all know that. The racial reconciliation, I'm married to an African-American man and his family's been here for three generations. There's a long history of racism in this community and that has to be confronted directly. I also feel that we, we're in a deep, we're in deep trouble financially. Downtown has been shut down in so many ways. We don't have any of that tax revenue while we have a small amount, but maybe 10% of the tax revenue that we had from hotels, from restaurants, from the convention center, from all those other things. I'm at the end here, I see on my own watch. All I want to say is I think I bring the skills, the maturity, the experience, and the attitude to do a good job as a city council member and I would be honored to do that. And I feel very blessed to be with such good people who are running. We've got great people in the 10th ward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we will hear from Katie, after which we will hear from Aisha. Katie, it's all yours.
Hi, thank you, Dylan. First, I want to thank everyone for being here today, as well as the Sunea Board for giving us this opportunity. My name is Katie Jones and I'm running to be your city council member. I'm a small-town Hoosier by birth and a Minneapolis resident by choice. When I moved here, my neighbors welcomed me and opened doors for me, making what was a big unfamiliar place home. I want everyone who lives here to feel that way too, to know that they belong and that this community has their back. I'm an engineer, a climate advocate, and a community builder. From bridging the renter homeowner divide on the Neighborhood Association to making energy efficiency more transparent in city policy, I solve tough problems by pulling together stakeholders to fix broken systems. This next city council term is just two years and I'm ready to hit the ground running to tackle our city's challenges the same way I have co-created community change for years. As president of the Lowry Hill East Neighborhood Association Board, I spearheaded efforts to make the association more inclusive and supportive of renters and oversaw an increase in renter representation on the neighborhood board from two to more than half. As a member of the Parks Community Advisory Committee, I organized the neighborhood's first three-on-three basketball tournament to foster dialogue around the future of Mueller Park. The original full-court basketball court was cut in half 20 years ago when the sport was unjustly targeted as a driver of crime. The tournament successfully changed the narrative, drawing support for the return of a full court. And through dialogue, we created a plan that would also protect the Parks Tree Canopy. Our city has experienced tremendous pain in the last year. It may seem that our city is hopelessly divided, but I've seen us break through these divides and in talking with neighbors, I'm finding we have more in common than you'd think. Neighbors value our access to parks, our ability to walk to great restaurants and stores, and our diversity. They also believe in the right to housing, all of our neighbors. They know it's time to reimagine how we do public safety and they want the city to take big steps to address climate change. I'm running for city council because I want to work with you to create a community where everyone knows they belong and that the doors of opportunity are wide open. This means creating a city that is more just, connected, and sustainable. This list starts with justice for a reason. COVID and the murder of George Floyd by the MPD lay bare the injustices that have been embedded in our city through decades of overt and structural racism. Our black and brown neighbors have systematically lost years of life, joy, and opportunity. Amidst the pain and fear, there is a temptation to retreat from community, but we must resist that urge and instead work together to right these historical wrongs. Ajust Minneapolis ensures basic needs are met. It provides stable housing for all. It protects workers from unfair treatment. And Ajust Minneapolis is a safe Minneapolis. And it invests in violence prevention. It allocates resources to appropriate responders for mental health crises, property crime, and traffic stops, reserving armed law enforcement for only the most violent situations. And for too long, we have had one public safety tool in Minneapolis and the data shows that has not succeeded in keeping people safe. You can't build a house with just a hammer. You need levels, saws, a full toolbox. For public safety, we need the same. We need the right tools, the right professionals, to achieve the safety outcomes we want. Many Apolitans should be able to trust that responders will not cause them harm. As your city council member, I will fight to build this trust of a public safety system that keeps everyone safe. My next priority is creating a connected Minneapolis. That means expanding access. It's building a city where adults and kids alike can reach everyday needs within a 15-minute walk, bike, or transit ride. It's a city where neighbors with disabilities or strollers can navigate the sidewalks in all seasons, where neighborhood daycare is just a short bus ride away, where seniors have safe and easy access to basic necessities. I've fought for transportation as a part of the city's infrastructure committee and it's what I will fight for as your city council member. And Minneapolis must focus on sustainability. This means creating a caring economy, one that thrives while minimizing environmental impacts. It's a city that invests in both the needs for jobs and the need for new green initiatives through training programs and worker resources. It's also a city that extends composting opportunities to every renter and incentivizes sustainable new development. I've worked towards a sustainable Minneapolis by dropping annual greenhouse gas emissions on my own triplex by 79% and by bringing solar to more than a dozen homes. I'll bring the same spirit and commitment as your city council member. In partnership with you, I'll continue to fight for a more just, connected, and sustainable Minneapolis. No matter how divided we feel, it is possible to realize our shared vision. I've seen what this community is capable of when our neighbors come together. Building a brighter future for Minneapolis will take each of our voices, each of your voices, and it will take a leader who can invite you to the table and facilitate caring, solutions-oriented dialogue. As an engineer and a community builder, convening and problem-solving is what I do. When I moved here, you opened doors for me. Now I'm running for this seat to open doors of City Hall for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we will hear from Aisha, after which we will hear from Stephen. Aisha, it's all yours.
Hi, everyone. My name is Aisha Chugtai. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a community organizer, a union activist, a first-generation immigrant, and Muslim-American. I'm running because Ward 10 needs a representative who will ensure the voices of those most impacted by decisions are prioritized in decision-making. I'm dedicated to fighting shoulder-to-shoulder with all of you for equity and justice for all Minneapolis residents. My story is the story of so many people in our community. I know what it's like to struggle to find affordable housing, to be a child helping your immigrant parents navigate the world, to have to choose between buying groceries and making a student loan payment. I first moved to this community because it was the only place I could afford to live, but I stayed because I was welcomed with open arms. As a political organizer for the Service Employees International Union, I stand with working people every day. Their struggle, the daily struggle of trying to make ends meet, is one I've known my entire life. My parents were immigrants with blue-collar jobs who fought to keep their heads above water as they raised my three siblings and me. I've been working since I was young in retail and in childcare. I've spent most of my career working to elect progressive leaders to public office. I served as the campaign manager to Congresswoman Ilhan Omar and have worked for progressive champions like State Senator Aaron Murphy and Senator Bernie Sanders. While working at Take Action Minnesota, I led our effort to elect progressive leaders to municipal office in St. Paul, Minnetonka, and Duluth. In 2019, I was entered into the DFL Women's Hall of Fame as a rising star. I've also served as the vice chair to the 5th Congressional District DFL and helped found the Muslim Caucus of the Young Democrats of America. The stakes are incredibly high today for renters, for people living in poverty, for black, brown, and indigenous people, and they're only getting higher. We need a leader who will fight for policies that leave no one behind because they understand what it's like to be left behind. I will be a champion for policies like fair scheduling that protect working-class people. I will be a bold voice for investing in evidence-based, public-health-centered alternatives to policing that makes sure everyone feels safe in their communities. I will fight for housing policies like rent control that keep people in their homes. I love the city and I love our ward. Ward 10 is a community that cares for one another with abundance and creativity. I've seen over and over again the ways in which the people of our community come together to support one another in times of hardship and struggle. I see it as a core responsibility of the Ward 10 council member to bring people together in that spirit, to facilitate neighbors sharing resources and learning from one another. I believe the people of Ward 10 want to build a city where everyone has what they need to thrive, a Minneapolis that honors people's dignity and demonstrates the different and better world is possible. I will be a champion for the people in Ward 10 and across our city who are often forgotten. I will help build connections between our neighbors with big hearts and our neighbors who need someone to show up and fight alongside them. That's what my campaign is all about and I hope to earn your support. Thank you so much for having me with you all today. I look forward to answering your questions, getting to know you better, and continuing to show up with you.
Thank you. Before we move on to the final introduction for Stephen, I am going to share in the chat the order in which the first question is going to be asked. I'm making this exception because the way that the random number generator spat out, we will hear from Stephen with his introduction last and he will be the first one to answer the first question. So Stephen, the floor is all yours.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for allowing us to introduce ourselves and having us here in your space. So my name is Stephen Fritsch. I'm a queer man. I use he/him pronouns and I'm running as a democratic socialist. I was born in greater Minnesota, but I've spent most of my adult life in the Twin Cities. In 2018, I started a career in mass transit and with that, I moved down to Jacksonville, Florida. Down there, I started getting involved in local grassroots organizations and I worked on policies like defunding the police, prison abolition, anti-war protests, and feeding unhoused people. Right now, I live in the Wedge neighborhood with my partner Lisa and our dog Honeye. And I'm actually just off of 28th and Colfax, so I'm just down the street from a few of you. Once I moved back to Minnesota, though, I started getting involved with local political organizations. I started working with local distribution centers to fundraise and get supplies during the uprising this summer that arose from the murder of George Floyd. I also work with Save the Boards to memorialize the movement. It's a group that preserves the plywood protest art that was created throughout the summer. I'm running for city council in Ward 10 to help poor and working-class people. I think we need to create a city that really works for the people. Over half of Minneapolis rents, so we need to put laws in place that limit the annual rent increases to 3%. We need to push towards a citywide income-based rent, establish more cooperative housing, and create land trusts throughout the city so housing is more affordable for people who want to be homeowners. The workers are the backbone of the city. We need to start paying people a livable minimum wage. The fight for 15 was last decade and we need to increase minimum wage to 25 an hour immediately. We need to provide free school meals to all K-12 students. We need to promote worker cooperatives and incentivize a more democratic workplace by providing grants and tax abatement to co-ops. 2020 showed us a lot of things, but this is clear. We do have to work towards police abolition, but that's not something that's just going to happen overnight. It's a long process and we need to know that we won't be just getting rid of the police without replacement structures. We should start withholding police accountable with a civilian police accountability council. This will give the community the opportunity and the authority to make sure law enforcement officers are doing their jobs. We should take away their military-grade weaponry that they have as well because they should not be an occupying force in our communities. We also need to reallocate some of MPD's budget towards other public services like social workers because all public safety should not be up to the police. We're facing unprecedented climate catastrophe. We're in another polar vortex right now. Texas is getting piled on with snow. We have to act quick as a city and do what we can. We need to tell Governor Walz that we want him to stop line three and not allow any more pipelines to go through our state. We need to make all public transportation all completely free, expand services to underserved communities, and create rapid transit lines to areas in and outside of Minneapolis. By ensuring utilities and transportation are publicly owned, the people of Minneapolis will be able to take the future and make sure that the environment is safe. We have a great city, but we need to continue working towards making it more equitable. Thanks.
Thank you. We're now going to proceed to the part of the forum where we will be asking one question to all candidates, again in a random order, before starting over with a second question and asking the same question to all candidates. These questions were put together by the board here at the South Uptown Neighborhood Association based on input that we received when we had our community come together to start building our forward-looking strategic plan. This first question, however, deviates from that slightly and these questions may repeat some of the topics that were brought up in your introductions. For this first round of questions, you will likely spend the majority of your first elected term getting up to speed and developing relationships with your colleagues and constituents. If you could only achieve one item on your platform, which would you consider to be your priority? You have 90 seconds to answer. Stephen, we will start with you. Stephen, we will start with you.
Perfect. Just picking one, it's going to be tough. I would say, for me personally, it would be increasing minimum wage to twenty-five dollars an hour immediately. You know, I have so many family members that they're working two or three jobs, and they're still paying over fifty percent of their income to just rent, you know. We really got to account for inflation over the last thirty and forty years and make it so that people can afford to live in this city. Thanks.
Thank you. We will now proceed to hear from Katie. Katie, if you could achieve only one item on your platform, which would you consider to be your priority?
Thanks for the question. Given my wheelhouse, so if there's just one year, given my depth of wheelhouse in sustainability, I think it would have to be addressing climate change. As a couple of people have already mentioned, we don't have time to wait on climate change, and every year, every day, every second that we wait to address that is going to make it even more of a giant crisis for us to deal with later and experience lots and lots of harms from that. And so, as part of that, I want to really focus on addressing heating decarbonization in buildings as well as decarbonization of our transportation sector, noting that those are the two largest pieces of our carbon footprint. And if we are going to reach our greenhouse gas emissions goals, we must address those. That'll take a multi-pronged approach. We are going to have to significantly retrofit a hundred thousand buildings in the city of Minneapolis with insulation and significant air ceiling in order to electrify our homes. And on the transportation side, we're going to need to electrify our fleets as well as to reduce our vehicle miles traveled and have more efficient transportation options in order to actually reach that carbon emission goal. So, thank you very much for the question.
Thank you, Katie. We will now ask Aisha the same question. If you could only achieve one item on your platform, which would you be considered to be your priority?
Yeah. You know, I am a renter. I live in the Whittier neighborhood, and I am a person who's experienced housing insecurity almost my entire life. If I could achieve one thing in a year, I would spend that time making sure that people like me, people who are afraid of being priced out of the neighborhoods they love, have the ability to stay in their communities. You know, we're in the middle of a large public health and financial crisis, and in this next year, we're going to see the lifting of the eviction moratorium, and I'm incredibly concerned about the long-term impact that people losing access to their housing could have on our community. So, I'd focus on strengthening protections for tenants across our city.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from David. David, if you could only achieve one item on your platform, which would you consider to be your priority?
I really feel that the city council has been very dysfunctional, really seriously dysfunctional. I thought we were bad on our Duluth council, but no, this one takes the cake. So, I think absolutely the most important thing is to build really strong relationships and get to know each person despite difficulties with that group of thirteen individuals and characters. Because if you cannot work closely with people, if you cannot go in and say, "I'm going to trade this and do that," you won't be able to get anything done. And we have seen what happened to our city in this last year when everybody was running in a whole bunch of different directions, and they didn't quite know what to do or how to govern. They knew how to take care of certain constituency groups, but they did not understand the needs of the entire city. To me, the biggest thing right now in doing that is that we're in an economic freefall right now. We are in an economic freefall. So, business development, when I say business development, I'm not talking about just that. I'm talking about economic development of all kinds, for people to provide jobs, to provide affordable housing. That whole piece is absolutely crucial. So, in building those relationships, then you can figure out how to look at the needs of the whole city and so that people don't get left behind. I think that's absolutely vital. We've got to revitalize that Lake Street was bombed out. I mean, that is just such an unfortunate situation with the damage that happened there. The people who own their businesses, minority-owned businesses that they had built up very carefully with their families and with their friends, they need to be re-empowered to come back and help do that again. We need to help regenerate the energy downtown so that the tax income comes in, so that we can do these other things. If we don't have a strong economy, if we don't try to get full employment for people, we're going to continue to have crime. We're going to continue to have other problems. So, I think that's what I would focus on.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Alicia. Alicia, if you could only achieve one item on your platform, which would you consider to be your priority?
So, one of the things that I'm calling for is a precinct-by-precinct truth and reconciliation process. And that is the one thing that I would say I would want to have a lot of progress on before I left. Because if people don't feel safe, if we can't really come together to understand both the gun epidemic that we're living through, the violent crime epidemic that we're living through, as well as our need for police reform and police accountability, then all of the other things that we want to achieve are not going to happen. Right now, there are places in the city, actually, we're having crime wave across the city, our ward in particular with carjackings. But just this weekend in Northside, there were four women who were shot, two of whom were pregnant. We had two people murdered over by the Roosevelt High School. So, none of the things that we want to accomplish are going to be possible without really coming together as a city to address the whole nexus of what I'm calling restorative justice. And that was my kids needing to go to bed. So, I may jump off in a second and yell at people to get into bed, but that's my answer right there.
Thank you. And for wrapping up this first question, we will hear from Chris. Chris, if you could only achieve one item on your platform, which would you consider to be your priority?
Well, since I have to only list one thing, I would go back to the number-one priority of government, and that is to provide for the safety of the people that they serve. We need to address the increase in crime, which is hitting Ward 10 and Uptown very hard. But we also need to make sure that officers are held accountable for bad behavior. We can create significant change in the culture of the MPD without sacrificing public safety. And I repeat that. We can create significant change in the culture of the MPD without sacrificing public safety. We can do this in a collaborative manner. There's plenty of opportunities right now. There have been changes that have been made already on oversight. We have a third of our department that is walking out the door. And we can implement training and steps to change the culture, but we also have to get a handle on the crime because we can have all of the amenities we want in this town. But if people don't feel safe walking outside their door, if people don't feel safe to come in and patronize our businesses, then that is going to be a big problem. And we need to do this at City Hall in a collaborative manner and ensuring that we have input from the neighborhoods and the citizens. And it has to be more than counting to seven votes. We need to move forward by consensus.
Thank you. That wraps up our first of three questions. We'll now begin the round with the second question. In the chat, I have shared the order in which this question will be asked. Again, from the beginning of the question to the end of the answer, we're hoping to get them wrapped up in ninety seconds. We will begin with Katie. Katie, based on what we've heard from neighbors in a recent community meeting, the number-one concern that comes up is safety. Can you share your vision on public safety in our community and as it pertains to funding? You have ninety seconds.
It's a great question. And I think the first thing to do is just to acknowledge how our public safety system has been working for the last hundred and fifty years. And then in particular, we're not getting the outcomes that we want. Particularly, our Black and Brown neighbors are disproportionately harmed by that system. And so, we need to take drastic change in order to make sure that we have the outcomes of safety that we want. My approach to safety is thinking about what are the questions we need to even ask in the first place? And I think the crucial one is what tools do we need to provide safety? Right now, we've had one tool that we've used for the past hundred and fifty years, and I think we need to expand that toolbox. And that includes having the right responders for mental health, for substance abuse, different responders for property crime. You know, if I have a bicycle stolen from my garage, I don't think I need two armed officers to come and write a report for that. And when I've been talking to community members, that approach has been resonating. I think it seems like there is more divide than there is, but on a lot of these issues, having the right responders for the right issues is really something that people are wanting so that we can reduce the amount of policing that we have and to work towards a safer community. And that's building on top of the other things that I mentioned to provide community stability, both in economic and in housing. So, thank you very much for that question.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Chris. Chris, can you share your vision on public safety in our community and as it pertains to funding?
Yes. So, public safety, of course, I'm a firefighter. I can't forget my firefighter brothers and sisters. We need to make sure that our fire department and our EMS safety net is operating with full staffing up to NFPA seventeen-ten standards, which is four people on every piece of apparatus. That is not happening. That is a danger to not only the community, but to firefighters as well. On the policing side, as I've talked about, we need to do what we can to hire up to the required number of police officers. That is part of the mayor's budget and what the chief has outlined as needing. You know, we need to make it a priority, even in this challenging budget picture. But as I talked about, we also need to change the culture. So, as has been currently put forward in the hiring process, they're looking for police officers that have a wider variety in their background and a broader life experience in dealing with people of color and in different diverse communities. I think that that is a proper way to proceed. And when you're getting these folks in on the ground level with the proper training and oversight, it can lead to long-term change. We also need to increase citizen oversight. So, the PCOC was allowed to flounder under the current council. Almost half of the positions were not being filled, and that's a huge issue. They need to be given proper power and proper oversight.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Stephen. Stephen, can you share your vision on public safety in our community and as it pertains to funding?
Yeah. I think that's a good question. And I do think public safety is very important, you know. I support firefighters, mental health professionals, and emergency medical staff. I don't think law enforcement is needed in every situation, and I don't think they're quite trained for every situation. I do think that holding law enforcement officers accountable is important, but I also think that, you know, they do take up a large chunk of the city's budget currently. I think reallocating the resources to other public safety measures would be helpful, but also helping with economic development would be a good use of those funds as well.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from David. David, can you share your vision on public safety in our community and as it pertains to funding?
Yes. The fact that there are over two hundred police who are no longer serving has reduced our numbers rather dramatically. And I think it's important that we support the new cadets that are being recruited. That money was in the budget. It was pulled out so they could release it and look good, I guess. I don't believe in playing games around this stuff. I think it's much better to be very direct about stuff and don't do passive-aggressive Minnesota stuff. You know, just be honest and direct with people. Let them know what you want to do. We have to recruit more police. There's no question because we have to fill some of these gaps. Police are very difficult to train, cost a lot of money, takes a lot of time, and we're going to have to work hard to do it. In the meantime, there are other things we can do by using the police that we do have to do neighborhood gatherings and set up neighborhood watch and neighborhood gathering groups where people can patrol and take care of their own neighborhoods. It happens all over the world. We just don't seem to do it as much here. We tend to say, "Well, we professionalized it. We want the police to do it." We all need to be involved in helping create public safety. And as I said before, investing money is a significant piece that we have to do to help economic development because if people are working and making money and have stake, crime will be reduced. Thank you.
Thank you. Aisha, can you share your vision on public safety in our community and as it pertains to funding?
Yeah. You know, everyone deserves to feel safe where they live, and safety is most effective when it comes from the community and when we make sure everyone's needs are met. Right now, we're asking our police to do too much. We ask them to be social workers and crisis counselors and everything in between. And right now, our law enforcement and criminal justice system inflict disproportionate harm on our Black and Brown and LGBTQ community. We cannot achieve safety for all under a system that perpetuates injustice. I believe we can live in a community where we achieve public safety without police. I know we're not going to get there overnight. We need to be thoughtful, recognize, and address people's concerns, do our research, and go about achieving this vision in a way that is both compassionate and evidence-based. I support the ongoing community-led petition to change our charter and replace the Minneapolis Police Department with a new Department of Public Safety. That's the first step to approaching public safety from a holistic, public-health-centered perspective. You know, I'd really like to see us create a comprehensive strategy for 911 dispatch to ensure appropriate frontline responders show up when people need help. We need to build democratized and police-free systems of public safety like we started building in our neighborhoods over the summer. And we need to invest in social service programs and city programs that address the root cause of crime.
Thank you. I am putting the order for the third question in the chat so no one is taken by surprise. And Alicia, you will have the final say on the second question. Can you share your vision on public safety in our community and as it pertains to funding?
Yeah, so I shared earlier in my response that my vision really fits within what I call restorative justice. And I think that there are kind of two parts of how we want and we need to address this. First, especially about funding, though, I want to say it was mentioned that we've been working with one tool, and that actually is not correct. One of the things that, when I approach a problem, I listen, I learn, and then I lead. From listening, what I'm learning is that we have actually had a number of different co-responder-type programs. We've had people who work with police in the domestic violence field. We actually have had restorative justice processes at neighborhood level with police officers to divert things before they became bigger crimes. But these were defunded. These things have been systematically defunded by people, by an ideology of rugged individualism from the right for the past thirty years. And that is a part how we've gotten ourselves to this place where we are kind of tearing each other apart. So, I would like to learn from the programs that we actually have had that have been successful and refund those programs. In February of 2020, there was a working group from the whole state that looked at what we need to accomplish here. And that was led by Keith Ellison and Chief Harrington, two Black men. The people, this was a working group of eighteen. Thirteen of them were Black or Indigenous leaders. I want us to look at that plan rather than having the hubris of reinventing the wheel and focus on prevention and peacemaking as well as transforming police.
Thank you. We will now move on to the final question that will be asked of all candidates, and we will begin with David. As an elected official, how do you balance your responsibilities between the will of your constituents and your own personal conviction? You have ninety seconds.
We live in a republic, which means we elect people to represent. That doesn't mean that you put your finger up in the air and wait for the wind to blow and decide what you're going to do because of what you hear from so many people. You need to have a strong set of convictions and beliefs, and sometimes there'll be people who will be upset with you. But that's okay because that means you're actually doing your job the right way. So, what you do is you take your values and what you believe. You listen to as many people as possible. You ask hard questions. You get information, and then you help to make a decision and build consensus so you can actually get governing done, where you can actually make things happen and help things change. And I think what happens so often is people are so ideological, and they're driven by their ideology that they don't see that there's something different of trying to bring people together and trying to make decisions together. So, you listen, and then you make the decision, and you live with it.
Thank you. We will then move on to Aisha. As an elected official, how would you balance your responsibilities between the will of your constituents and your own personal conviction?
Yeah, um you know, I see it as a core responsibility of the Ward ten council member to bring people together and facilitate neighbors and sharing resources. With and learning from one another. And I think that has three different parts to it, there's the piece on being accessible to community. Um being able to receive accountability from the folks you represent and building strong relationships with both. Um city staff and people who live in the community. Um to me, that looks like um committing to having regular town halls and consistently attending community meetings and being available. Throughout Ward ten for things like drop in office hours. Um for folks who might not have as easy of a time um accessing city government. Um you know, I think that uh when it comes to accountability, it means always being able to listen and communicate. Even when we disagree with one another and especially when we disagree with one another. Um and when it comes to building strong relationships, right, like. Change is based in community and I want to maintain relationships with people and movements that are on the forefronts of of winning so many of our fights. Um and that looks like meeting with um folks like um you know, no neighborhood organizations and um issue and movement groups, labor unions and worker centers and business associations. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to Chris. Chris, as an elected official, how would you balance your responsibilities between the will of your constituents and your own personal conviction?
Yeah, that's a a great question, um you know, we we all bring our um lifetime of uh values. Uh values that have been imparted uh upon us by um uh by our family, by our friends over the years and we. We bring this to our to our to this position. Um I've been lucky enough to be serving um a constituency of firefighters in the state for the last fifteen years. Um I was elected to four terms with my local union and three terms representing folks on a statewide basis. Uh you know, I I people are not always going to agree. And I've had plenty of people not agree with me on a lot of things. But what I have found is that if you allow people to be heard. Um if you allow their voices to be heard, if you acknowledge where they stand. Um that no matter what decision you you made, you uh you will you will have a mutual respect. Um people like discourse, I enjoy discourse, um if I'm lucky enough to serve, I will be um. Uh as accessible of a of a city council member as uh as anybody. Um I I I want to hear from everybody and and I want to move forward together. And uh that's that's the job of the city council person is to uh be an advocate for the shared values of the ward. And we're only gonna find that out by listening to each other.
Thank you. We will now move on to Katie. Katie, as an elected official, how would you balance your responsibilities between the will of your constituents and your own personal conviction?
Yeah, thank you for the question and I. Uh when you first asked it, the thing that came to mind is that I'm just so thankful for the strong values of our of our our ward. Um that it's really grounded in justice and equity and sustainability and having opportunity for all. And I think that really um sets us up really well um to to be able to move forward and and create outcomes with with those goals in mind. And so when I think about um how to approach um this role, I think of there it being rooted in both values and input from the community and with data. Um we want to be able to learn um from what's happened in other communities to make sure that we're. Um you know, not reinventing the wheel and constantly improving. Um and then also, of course, making sure that um that is being formed with our specific community and our specific needs in mind. Um as an engineer, as someone who's a data analyst, I've I've had experience having to bring those two things together. Um and with my experience on um of both the Parks Advisory Committee and the city's advisory committees. Uh I've had to um you know, had those struggles of, you know, what I what I personally want, but what I'm hearing from the community and um creating alignment of those. Um it takes a lot of problem solving and having an open mind to problem solve. So I would like to be a um a very responsive um uh council member, um making sure to have plenty of office hours in town halls. Um in order to make sure that I am he- hearing from everyone and what their needs are to continue to have that feedback loop. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. We will now move on to Alicia. As an elected official, how would you balance your responsibilities between the will of your constituents and your own personal conviction?
When uh I was first putting together this campaign, one of the the first, you know, kind of slogans that came to me was, I don't have all the answers, we do, right? And um some of my friends and and my closest confidants had poo-pooed that one, but. Uh that's kind of what came to my mind when you asked this question. Um I think it's important as a elected official to not come to the table thinking that you have all the answers. Uh but that you have a really strong vision for kind of these big picture things as I've laid out and made very clear. And we'll continue to talk with people and refine and learn and 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 communicate. Um I think that, like many of the people on the call, listening is really the first thing. And for me, that's actively listening, so you can expect me to push back sometimes, ask questions. Uh you know, I have a little bit of a fiery nature because I'm from Oklahoma, I'm not from Minnesota. Uh but in that process of actively listening, you know, I really um endeavor to hear what people. Are saying and what they mean, right, those aren't necessarily the same things. Um and then actively learning, always following up on what I'm lis- what I'm hearing. Um to see what else there is for me to share in learning and what there is for me to know myself. And those are the the first things to do before you lead. I think that there are gonna be times as a city council member when people disagree with me. And I want everybody to know that disagreement is fine, conflict is part of life, it's part of having relationships. And that's one of the reasons why, you know, I have um been taking every opportunity that I can to train in restorative processes. Because restorative processes are not about denying conflict. They're not about denying kind of difficult feelings or uh people having diversion opinions and uh ways of doing things. But it's about taking that energy and really um using it to move forward um by building relationships, by by hearing. Oh where we're all coming from, so that's kind of my perspective um on, you know, the 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 um conflicts that are going to to arise in this position.
Thank you. And for the final say on the matters, Steven, as an elected official, how would you balance your responsibilities between the will of your constituents and your own personal conviction?
Yes, I think that's a really good question. I I personally, I I believe in democracy and I think as a counselor, you need to amplify the voices of the majority of your constituents. So I think one's personal beliefs are important because that's why, you know, you would get elected. But I don't think that they should be thrown out the window when you get into office either. I think it's crucial while in office to maintain your integrity, but also to listen to the will of the people. Keep an open door, respond to emails, answer the phone, hold town halls, all those are important. The more you listen to the people that live in your ward, the more you can represent.
Thank you. That now concludes our three questions we had prepared for the candidates. Um in the chat, you will see that we shared all the websites for the candidates. Um to give a pitch for another upcoming forum, uh The Wedge is hosting a forum on the twenty fourth. Um you can find that at the website for The Wedge. Um early voting starts on September seventeenth with Election Day on November second, so you still have plenty of time to. To explore your your candidates and see who you like best.